More recently, Australia has apologised for forced adoption. The question was put by Florence Malone to Professor Eileen Munro as to whether in the future we may see an apology in the UK. Her response was: "I would not be surprised if a future generation looks back and thinks how horrific the quality of our work was and the damage that we did to families."
If you're not prepared to predict and intervene far more early, then there are children that are going to grow up in families that we know perfectly well are completely dysfunctional and the kids, a few years down the line, are going to be a menace to society and actually a threat to themselves.
Social services went to America with no legal, lawful documentation and took the girl away at gunpoint because they got the American police involved. Now, this is one of the key things with social services: they are a law unto themselves.
And they are spinning out children.
They lie, they forceify documents, they bully, they intimidate.
So the whole thing has become a very nasty, inhuman racket.
They threaten, they spread false rumours to help get the children away.
This case is not unique. There are even international cases where the system has taken children from people visiting the UK and refused to give them back even though the system clearly does not have jurisdiction.
I'm interested in how, really, because a lot of the evidence suggests you need to be getting in there while the child is still in nappies, frankly. Or pre-birth, even.
Child's play or antisocial behaviour? Parents in fight are warned that their kid's actions could lead to eviction.
Jumping for joy, little sisters Laurel and Elise Fletcher love their home in Dunfermline's Inver Yew place. So does dad David. They moved in here 18 months ago. Along with mum Pamela, they've been tenants of Kingdom Housing Association for several years. But their happy home wasn't so happy when this letter arrived from the association. It said some very young children had been damaging plants and piling boulders on cars. It warned if the behaviour continued, families could be evicted. Pamela feared she could lose her home.
I was worried about the fact that the kids couldn't go out to play because obviously you don't want to do anything to jeopardise your tenancy. Do love my house and what kingdom I've done building all these houses for people like us, it's fantastic, but they can't be allowed to get away with obviously sending out letters like that and really scaring us.
The letter went to all the association's tenants here, even those without children.
The letter came from Kingdom's headquarters here in Glenrothes. In a statement tonight, the housing association conceded that as their first communication with the community, it could have been better handled. Managers are reviewing procedures.
Well, social services in the UK have come under fire for forcibly taking children from their parents for seemingly minor reasons. Coworkers insist they are always putting the best interests of the children first, but families say they're needlessly broken up and critics claim the system is all wrong. RT's Laura Emmett investigates.
A woman jailed for waving to her children across the street. A mother in court over sending her eight-year-old son a birthday card. They may sound like surreal soundbites from a totalitarian state, but actually they're headlines from the UK. Christopher Booker is an investigative journalist who's looked into what he calls forced adoption.
I had a case the other day where a mother was about to deliver her child in a hospital and five policemen and two social workers came into the delivery room to seize that child. Five policemen with a mother who is helpless lying there giving birth to her baby. I mean, you can't believe such things are happening.
This family is now a happy one, but it was once torn apart and anger remains at the actions of social services. Little Constancia's elder sister was taken into state care aged just four months and social workers wanted to take Constancia too at birth.
I did think my daughter'd come back to us after a time, but she ended up being put up for adoption about three years ago. My daughter was about to come back to us when a psychologist came forward and diagnosed us as paranoid, depressed, and he used a term 'remote'. And on that basis of that, it was harder to get my daughter back.
Although that diagnosis was refuted by other doctors, it took John Fowler five years to get his daughter back. She was taken on evidence from his 11-year-old stepson, who accused John and his wife of hitting their children, something they deny.
I wouldn't say I was a brilliant stepfather, there was problems in the house, but I didn't think it merited taking my daughter into care and putting them into care themselves. I think the problems could have been addressed in a better way.
There are around 60,000 children in care in the UK, half a percent of the total child population. Christopher Booker says there are hundreds, possibly thousands, of cases a year in which children are wrongly taken and he's suspicious about the motives.
There is a very considerable amount of money to be made for, if you're an adoptive parent, you take in one of these children or you're a foster carer, you can get £400 a week for each child, which is, if you have two or three adopted children, it's a hell of a lot of money. So the whole thing has become a very nasty, inhuman racket.
For 17 years, Tammy and Yvonne Coulter have been forced to live apart even though they're mother and daughter. They were separated and Tammy was put up for adoption because she'd suffered a bruised cheek, an injury that social workers accepted was an accident. Well, now the couple are campaigning for the law to be changed. Five Jason Farrell has their amazing story.
I was taken from my mother nearly 17 years ago on a false allegation. I was happily playing in a baby bouncing chair where I leant forward because I dropped one of my toys and the chair collapsed and it swung around and hit me on the cheek and I sustained a bruise.
Two days later from the incident, a social worker came to my door and said they'd had an anonymous call and from there on, it was a long battle with the family courts.
Yvonne fought a two-year legal battle to try to get her daughter back, during which time she had a second child.
A male social worker came in the labour suite while I was laying on the actual bed and tried to hand me papers, a place and safety order.
Yvonne was eventually allowed to keep her son Cameron, but her daughter Tammy was put up for adoption. As she grew up, Tammy was always curious about her birth parents. In January this year, aged 17, she tracked down her mother through the internet.
I don't know, this is great.
It was so emotional, we didn't speak, we just flung our arms around each other and cried.
Tammy moved in with her mother this summer and after just a few months of knowing each other, they seem settled and extremely close. And now they're even campaigning together for greater transparency in the family courts.
The family courts should be opened and the medical evidence should definitely be based on fact more than probabilities. And if the family courts were open, it would help children who are being abused as well.
Yeah, definitely.
Definitely. It works both ways.
In a statement regarding Tammy's case, Derbyshire County Council said: "The decisions in this case were made by the courts. They were based on assessments by the county council and the guardian appointed by the courts to look after the child's interests. We're confident that our assessment was an accurate reflection of the facts. They also welcome a more transparent system and so does the government."
You can't actually dispel people's fears by everybody inside the system saying, "Don't worry, everything we're doing is fine." You have to have some measure of openness and accountability and that's what we're going to try and do.
I think there are many other children and parents going through the same thing as what I did and in five or 10 years' time, they will be feeling the same way as I do, only I am the first young adopted adult to have a voice and say how I've been feeling.
Welcome back. Imagine being told your children are to be taken away and put up for adoption and it'll be clear the judge believes you're not fit to care for them.
For today's life matters, we report on one family who'd been told they may never see their young son and daughter again and they believe they've been singled out because their mother has learning difficulties.
The couple can't be identified because of legal reasons. Their experience has prompted campaigners to remind everyone that their case is not unique. Our social affairs correspondent Helen Wright reports now on a family's adoption anguish.
The newly-made bed is waiting for its young occupant to return. A little girl, now four, who hasn't seen her parents for 10 months and following a court ruling, may never do so again. A judge concluded that the girl and her baby brother must be adopted against their parents' wishes. They now plan to appeal that decision, a fight that could take them to the European courts.
She's just saying it was in children's interests for them to be adopted. I could say my daughter would be confused if she was to come home, but she's already confused, especially 10 months in care.
It's said the couple, who must remain anonymous, can't manage the anticipatory process of parenting. The mother, who has learning difficulties, said to have limitations and to lack emotional warmth towards her daughter, something she denies.
I used to take her outside, on the streets, on my own for a walk and play with her in the back garden on my own and in the house. She used to like music and dancing and she used to like helping me with the baby, get the baby's things.
This couple never hurt or abused the children. The judge said they were decent, law-abiding parents who'd done nothing intentionally wrong, but rejected a support plan where relatives and experts would help if the children were returned.
They felt that in this case, they'd done everything they could to keep that family together and it just was never going to work. So ultimately, if the children were going to suffer harm, they had to make the very, very sad and difficult decision to bring them into care.
But the parents intend to challenge that. I asked one expert what view European law takes of this issue.
An important principle which has come out of the European case law is that children should not be removed from their parents just because they could be placed in a more beneficial environment. They can only be removed from their parents if it's actually detrimental to them to stay there.
Cases like this one are complex and everyone involved faces difficult decisions, but disability rights campaigners are seriously concerned that parents with learning difficulties are being unfairly targeted within the care system. Helen Wright, ITV News.
Now, the family in Helen's report are just one of many who end up before the courts. We want your views for today's Pulse. What's your experience of social workers? Have your children been placed in care? Do you think it's right perhaps that the children of parents with learning difficulties should be put up for adoption so that they can have a better life?
Now, we're on the street, mate, we're fresh.
We're on the street.
We're not filming in this, right? Okay? I'll stop that then. Right, this is Bill Malone speaking for Pyomex Films. I am outside the Inner London Family Proceedings Court, or as they are called by a lot of us, the secret family courts. Right, we were in Lewisham yesterday. This is a strange story I've got for you all. When I was driving from Lewisham, I saw a young couple and they was crying. Both of them were crying. I'll just call them A and B. A is the guy, B is the girl. The girl is 18 years of age, the guy is 24 years of age. The story came out when I talked to them, I said, "Are you all right?", that they said, "Tomorrow, we are at the Inner London Family Proceedings Court in Wells Road, just off of Soho, and they are going to take our child away from us for good." Now, this child is 10 months old. Let me just give you a bit of the history and we're going to call them A and B. A is the guy, B is the girl. Now, when B, the girl, she had this baby and it was taken away from her after five hours because they said to her, the social services said, "Because you were brought up in care, you are a danger to this child." So they took the child away. Then they kept the child for six weeks and gave the girl the child back, who, the child was only two months, and they gave her the child back and let her have the child for a couple of weeks. They gave her £130 every two weeks to look after this child. Right, now, they're taking the child away again. So the child has been in care for the last eight months. We're talking about a 10-month-old baby girl. Right, now, the mother, when she last saw the baby girl with the foster parents, the foster parents are getting £390 per week for this child. Right, now, the reason they can't look after the child, these young people say, A and B, is what their solicitor told us, we'll call her Jenny for now, she said, basically, they can't fill in forms. They're not illiterate, but they cannot handle the bureaucracy of the forms of their benefits, et cetera, to keep their lives going. Those people whose baby has been taken away, these two youngsters, are now living on the floor of a garage somewhere in south-east London. Right, so, when I saw them at Lewisham yesterday, I said, I explained who we were and if they needed our help and they said, "Oh, yes, please." So we got in touch with our solicitor. I had a long chat with our solicitor yesterday and as I say, we'll just call her Jenny. I said to Jenny, "I want to know if this kid has been abused by these two young parents at all?" And she said, "Absolutely not." I said, "So, if that is the case, what is going on?" The solicitor said to me, Jenny, she said, "These kids are getting a raw deal." I said to her, "That's good enough for me, Jenny. These kids are getting a raw deal, I'm on it." So, we found the kids and then we said that we're going to be here to support them. They said, "Great." Then, this morning, we had a phone, we had an email from Jenny saying the kids don't want us there. So, through our experience, we thought, "That's all load of bollocks, these kids are being manipulated." The social worker told them yesterday that if they spoke to us, it could affect the child's future. The child, don't forget, is 10 months old. So, the way we're seeing it is, they don't want the press in there. This is a secret family court. This is where our government are taking children, and we have the evidence of it here, at birth. Now, Martin Nary, who is with Dr Panardo, the chief executive of Dr Panardo, said, "We think that we should take children away from their parents if required when they're babies." Now, the only reason they've taken, that we've been told that these kids, their baby, has been taken away from them because they cannot fill in all the forms to get them the benefits. What they need is support. Bearing in mind, this young girl who has nothing, they come from poverty-stricken areas, she was receiving £138 every two weeks for her child, living in poverty, obviously, because you can't live on 65, 60-odd quid a week. We know that, keep a child and your partner. So, here we have a situation now, we've turned up, the security guards don't want to let Lily and myself in. This young girl, this young 18-year-old mother who has had her child stolen from her, stolen from her by our institutions, and we all know what that is, especially those of you who like myself are victims out there, this kid is on the road to fucking hell. This kid is now been taken away from its parents, who are being manipulated by, it seems to us, the barrister, the social worker, the solicitor and anyone else who's in the part. While her child is in care and foster parents are being given £390 a week to look after the kid, that's all these two, A and B, that's all these parents needed. They needed a bit of financial support, et cetera. So why not leave their kid, if it's just down to poverty, which it seems to be, an ignorance? You know, you can't take children's kids into care because their parents can't fill out their fucking benefit forms. That is absolutely outrageous. Why do they keep wanting the babies? Now, there's something that's a little bit more sinister. Right in the heart of our democracy and they are stealing our children. And now, we, the couple, when they came out of court who said they wanted our help, while they was in court, my producer got a phone call from their barrister saying that they didn't want to see us. Then the kids come out of court and the kids saw us and ran away. So they are being manipulated. One minute, they really want us to help them, so they've gone back to their garage on the floor in Croydon. While the solicitor, the barrister and anyone else in that court, the social worker, are all making fucking fortunes from these little babies. I don't know what else to say, you know? I really don't know what else to say. Oh, fuck, take it. Get the fuck out of here, little man.
So, I've got an impossible job because I'd like to talk to you about what's happening to the children in this country, but I can't talk to you about what's happening because everything is done under secret courts. And the UK column newspaper already has four injunctions out to stop us telling you what's being done with the children. It's a good system, isn't it? You're doing something wrong, so you run a secret court and then you hide it. The moment our newspaper came on the streets, people began to talk to us about things going on. And one of the early ones that came up was stories about children. I didn't believe them initially because they sounded too far-fetched, until the first mother arrived in our offices carrying about four ring binders of documents, court documents, transcripts. And the story that unfolded, which I will touch on, was just incredible. And the crime which I've listed there, this is absolutely correct. False evidence, false documentation, perjury in court, bullying and threats by the judiciary, the police, the social services. Everything you can think of in order to put pressure on the parents can be the father, but very often they tend to go for the mother. Now, if anybody is sitting thinking, "I am a social services person" or "I am a policeman", et cetera, it's shades of grey. I am not standing here saying that everybody who works from social services is bad and I'm not saying that for the police, all the courts. However, the body of evidence says that within these public sectors, we now have criminal and corrupt activity on a very big scale and it needs to be exposed and pretty quickly. What are they doing? Well, basically, they're breaking up families. They're breaking up mums and dads, they're getting the children away from the parents. And when those children are away, they can be used for things, they can be used for drug testing. If they die as a result of an illness or circumstances in hospitals, then body parts are disappearing. And otherwise, they can go into more or less a gulag system where they can be abused. And some of that came out on the BBC a while ago when a very brave lady spoke out about her abuse. Now, these are some of the statistics. I'm going to be thanking a man called Ian Joseph a bit later on, who's done a huge amount of work in a book, which I'll show you the cover of. So some statistics have come from him and some I've researched, but this is factual. 25,000 children a year are now disappearing into the system. And we ask why and we ask what's happening and we ask, "Who are these people who are now more qualified to say how you should look after your children than you are?" My two children are adult, so I've moved on a bit, but any of you who've got younger children or you've got grandchildren, I can tell you, those children are not safe. It doesn't matter what school they go to. Social services in that area have the power to take those children if they so wish. Now, these are some of the headlines that we've had in the paper. I've only picked a few because there's so many. Social services being described as the Stasi, that's come up several times. The father who was asked to donate organs to his son, but he wasn't allowed to see his son at all. Even judges, and there are good judges out there, but they're pretty lacking in backbone, are talking about foul play. And then the two cases down at the bottom, we're starting to get into something very sinister because people are now saying, "You're really not bright enough to have children of your own." Who says? Who makes this decision? Because that was the start of the eugenics programme, selective breeding. And for those of you that think eugenics came out of the Nazi party, it didn't, it came out of the Tavistock Institute in London. It's a British problem and it was exported to the Nazis. Now, the key thing, if we say who benefits, which is a great way to start a trial, it's pretty easy because everybody who touches a child who's taken away by social services is raking in the money. Legal profession tops. The industry of taking children into care, we know at the moment, is about 20 billion pounds worth. Billion. 70,000 pounds a day if an illegal team really gets stuck into it. 3,000 a day, medical experts, therapists, and then we've got the homes, 7,000 pounds a week. Now, a lot of morality disappears out the window pretty quickly when money appears. And in my opinion, linking huge payments of money with children is itself the start of a recipe for disaster. And yet, at the moment, we, the general public, are not told the detail. You don't read it in the newspapers and the reason is that the newspapers are gagged, just like the UK column is. If you take it a step further, there have been targets in place where the government says to a local authority, "We'll give you even more money if you can get more children put into care." So this is just a summary of the amounts paid to various councils for meeting their government's set targets for adoption. And it's big money. If you're a county council or a city council and your budget is under pressure, to be able to take in half a million pounds a year by putting children into the system is pretty easy picking. So we have now put a price on our children's heads. And if you think, and I'll keep stressing this, if you think because of your social position or your knowledge or your intelligence or because you're a good person, that these people are not capable of taking your child away, you are absolutely wrong. But we need to deal with it because if we don't, we've lost control of our society. Now, this is one of the key things with social services, they are a law unto themselves. So wherever they're situated, they've got their own links through local authorities and into government and through the police and through into the secret courts. And those courts are secret, the public is not allowed in, the press are not allowed in. And even though Mr Straw was recently boasting that there would be more openness, he was actually cheating you because what he was saying is there would be more openness on the decisions, not on how the court proceedings actually made those decisions. I think he lied. Try and think of it this way. We've got social services who've got tremendous power, they can take a human being away from its parents and they can then hold that child totally away from family until the child is 18, by which case, in many, many cases, the child has been turned against their own parents, its own parents. Now, how can social services get away with this? Well, it's to do with the fact that they aren't accountable to any normal regime. They hide directly behind the secrecy of the family courts. And those courts themselves can then be used to gag people. So you get too close to the truth, whomp, in comes the injunction. What does an injunction look like? Well, I've got four sitting on my desk, but I can't show you because the injunction says that I'm not even allowed to show you the injunction, which puts me under a gagging order. And they mean what they say because people have been put in prison for trying to tell the story. So we've got a secret regime set up in the middle of our councils, it can take children, it does take children, and then when you try and expose it, when the mothers try and expose it, you're in big trouble. Now, I don't know whether you know about this, but children are to be data-based and there's three basic databases, there's the contact point, there's a social services database and there's going to be a special one for special elitist people. Because we are heading for a dictatorship where there will be an elite and then there'll be other people. So there's a special database for the children of MPs and celebrities so that we don't get too close to their children. Fingerprinting in schools, how many know it's going on in your area? Can you put a hand up if you know? Well, you need to start digging because it's happening in all areas. Sometimes it's done as a game, sometimes it's done through the mouse in the libraries. But three more schools in Plymouth this week are adopting fingerprints even for going into lessons. Now, even Nick Clegg, who's not a friend of mine because he doesn't tell the truth about the European Union, even he saw it was dangerous and this was a statement he made in 2007, saying it was sinister. That's his word, sinister. Have you heard him speak out on it since then? No. Because the Lib Lab con means that all three major parties are helping to insert this type of thing into society. Even Germans themselves will tell you they are getting very nervous about seeing things which they'd seen in the past start to re-emerge. about seeing things which they'd seen in the past start to reemerge. Well, let's have a look at people. So who's pulling the strings? I've only got an hour, so I can't go through them all, but I'm going to give you an idea. And this lady, Harriet Harmon, is very interesting. Do you all know Harriet? Yes? She was fined, I think, a while ago for speeding. Well, she said that last year, something like two hundred people went to prison through secret courts. That's a very interesting statement, isn't it? Something like. That little bit tells you she's not really interested in how many. But I'm pretty interested in how many people are sent to prison after going through a secret court. Because if it's one, the next person could be me. Or it could be you. This is very dangerous stuff because the public has no track as to what's happening with people. And if you look at dictatorships, this is the route for putting people in gulags.
A pensioner couple have been handed jail sentences for getting in touch with their grandson. A seventy-one-year-old man was jailed for twenty months during a private hearing in the Midlands, held without a jury. And the sixty-one-year-old grandmother was given a twelve-month term, which has been suspended for two years. The grandmother was given the two-year suspended sentence in Nottingham because she contacted her grandson in care. The boy is fifteen years, six months, and he is eligible to leave the care home when he is sixteen. The grandson has been informing his grandmother that he's being physically assaulted and verbally abused in care. His grandmother came to his aid. And now she has been sentenced in a secret court from which the press were banned. Her husband has been sentenced to two years imprisonment. And the final twist is that although the boy should be released from care, the authorities are making a case to keep him away from his grandparents. To ensure the story doesn't leak out, the grandmother has now been given a two-year suspended sentence, and his step-grandfather is now serving a two-year jail term. The most important thing about this story is the grandson wishes to be with his grandmother and her partner. The grandmother and her partner wish to assist the boy. But the mere act of responding to the boy's pleas for help have been interpreted as breaching the family court rules.
What about academy schools? Do you know about those? They've been there in the paper. We're now bringing big business in to run schools because that's the way to do it, because the public purse is broke. Well, we can print money to go to the banks, but we can't print money to run schools or run hospitals. Very strange, isn't it? It's fraud on a massive scale. But academy schools are being set up. There's about six in the country. And these are some of the characteristics. We know they're going to take children in at an early age. They're going to keep them to eighteen. Therapy sessions. They are going to have therapy. They do have therapy rooms. And when you say who's going to get therapy, all the children are going to get therapy. Are you allowed in as a parent? Well, only if the therapist gives you permission. Otherwise, they have client confidentiality to the child. I was told, I'll call it a story, but I believe it is true, that a mother went to a school fairly close to me to pick up her teenage, young teenage daughter, to be told, "I'm sorry, she won't be going home because we are going to section her." And the mother stood there, just stunned, to be told that her daughter had been seeing the school psychiatrist for nearly a year, but she, as the mother, had not been told. This is all happening under your noses. And Brown and Cameron and Clegg know it's going on. So we did, on the right-hand side, an article about academy schools in the UK column. And we will put these up on the UK column website for you so you can read what we originally wrote. And what I'm doing is bringing all this information back out into the open so that you can see the picture I'm seeing. But these are the characteristics of the school. The curriculum can be changed after a year. We know that for a fact because we've cited one of the contracts. So initially, the government sets the curriculum. But after a year, the curriculum for that school is being set by a company that specializes in industrial military matters. Nice. Execution Limited is funding absolute return for kids? Like the name? Dream Mill. Do you like that name? Because that's looking into behavioural change in children. And they know there's going to be behavioural change because they are going to do the things to the kids to create that change. Have you ever wondered about the twenty-nine suicides in South Wales? Do you know about those? In a very small geographic area. What the good old BBC and the media isn't telling you is these suicide clusters are appearing in other places, particularly Northern Ireland. And the thing is that in committing suicide, the youngsters are doing things which are not normal. So for instance, girls don't normally hang themselves. They prefer drugs or slashing their wrists. But now you're seeing people committing suicides in ways which are not the normal ways. And what it is heading towards is that these youngsters and young people are very disturbed and something's disturbing them. And it's not microwave towers. It's something that's being done to them in school, in colleges, and elsewhere. I've got the project Caressing down there. I've got the teaching of eugenics. And that is absolutely correct. They are starting to teach eugenics or selective breeding in schools. And I've also, at the bottom there, if you can read it, put a little bit about who's funding this. Goldman Sachs. EIM International Asset Management. Warburgs. Citicorp. Deutsche Morgan Grenfell. These are all vast international banks who suddenly want to get very close to our children. Why? I'm going to help people by putting more money into charities and the third sector. He's not going to help them at all. That money will be used to impose the control structure for the new government. And your children are to be reeducated and re-engineered into a new society. Now, Bernardo's is a classic here because the chief executive stood up recently and said, "Brilliant, we must adopt more children at birth." Some children are being adopted before they're born. They're nominated for adoption before they're born. The children are taken, the baby's taken away from the mother. Immediately, she's given birth. That's happened on numerous occasions. And this man, chief executive of charity, says, "We need more babies taken at birth." What he doesn't say is he effectively provides consultancy. So the more babies that come into the world that he can get his hands on, the more money Bernardo's makes. The BBC's involved. And they've done at least one major programme where they're after parents. And I challenged them, and they got pretty heavy in a meeting in Plymouth. And when I asked, "Do you know the children are willingly given up for adoption?" They were advertised. I'll come over here. This is a magazine where they're showing photos of children and advertising them, just like puppies. But the BBC got a bit stroppy. So we started digging. Now, Common Purpose is there. I'm not going to go too heavy on Common Purpose because it's a whole subject. But this is the doorway to their London headquarters. It doesn't say anything. And that's because they're doing a lot behind the scenes, particularly behavioural modification. And they are going into schools in a very big way. And they're going into social services. Can I prove what I'm saying? Everything. So that's a little snapshot of Wales for you. Interesting, isn't it? Common Purpose is amongst the social services, and we've got problems with people. And this one is my favourite because about three years ago, I started to warn about paedophiles involved with Common Purpose because Common Purpose runs secret networks. And here we've got James Rennie, recently sentenced. He was abusing children as young as three months in Scotland. He was a Common Purpose-trained person. He was selected for that training by a Common Purpose advisory board. On that board was a senior police officer who later formed the same police force that arrested him for paedophilia. Thirtyeenth of October, Common Purpose was still proudly boasting his Facebook on one of their internal websites. And this organisation goes into school to train your children. "We are using neurolinguistics on the police, and the police are involved with children." Let's talk some cases. This is a lady up in Liverpool. She had three children. She was in the park one day, and a small motorbike came up onto the grass and hit one of her boys, broke his arm, damaged his leg. And he was duly taken to hospital, where, as a responsible mum, she stayed by his bedside for three days, while the other two children went to her mother. At the end of the third day, she'd been away, gone to the loo or something, came back, and there's a big group of people around the bed, about eight of them, doctors and people in plain clothes. And they said to her, "Mrs Spalack, we're going to take your son. We're going to take your children." She said, "What are you talking about?" "Well, we've got reason to say that these children need to be taken into care." That was all that was said to her. And then and there, they took the boy in bed. And while that was happening, the police went to her mother's house because her mother was looking after the other two children, and they took the other two children. And she has never had access to those children since. Never. We've printed her story, which caused ruptures, and a judge was moved because every piece of information used against this woman is fabricated. A pack of lies from start to finish. Sounds unbelievable, doesn't it? There must be something wrong with her. There isn't. She doesn't drink. She doesn't take drugs. She doesn't have multiple partners. She is a normal lady. Separated from a previous husband. They've taken the three children. And every shred of evidence used against her is fraudulent. This is another case. I've been intimately involved with this one. I've given a talk on it before I got an injunction slapped on me. This lady had a daughter. Daughter was ill. And I'll tell you what was the matter with her, as they later found out. She had a thing called Zollinger's disease, which is multiple perforations of the gut, like multiple ulcers. Intensely painful, so painful that the pain eventually radiates right through to your back. She went into a series of South Wales hospitals where she wasn't treated. We've got the documents where we show that there was no diagnosis, but they prescribed a huge cocktail of drugs. They tried to get the mother at one stage to give her a dose of oral morphine. If the mother had given it to her, she would have killed the daughter. She was run around hospitals. The daughter was in pain. She couldn't work at school properly. Social services got involved. Nightmare. Because the next minute is that in taking the girl to America to get a medical opinion, social services went to America with no legal lawful documentation and took the girl away at gunpoint because they got the American police involved. And I have sat in a court with this lady twice or three times now. And in the last case, because she now acts for herself, she proved in that court that when the girl was taken away, the local authority had no legal power to do so whatsoever. The judge was happy to allow the local authority to have witnesses, but he wouldn't allow the mother to have witnesses, even though they were local councillors prepared to testify on oath that their council had broken the law. Welcome to secret courts. She was never allowed in a court to say she wanted to go home. When they brought her back from America, they put this girl in the psychiatric institute. They told her, "You are imagining your pain." What about that? For mental cruelty. And eventually, though, social services ended up putting her on a cocktail of drugs till they realised that what the mother had discovered in America, Zollinger's, was true. There wasn't any apology, and the girl was never given back. And she wrote about twenty pleading letters like this. And she tells about social services people laughing at her. A Plymouth couple. I've got an injunction. Can't talk about them. Their baby was ill. Derriford Hospital. The hospital said it was a cancer, a form of cancer. They wanted to do chemo, all sorts of things. The parents just didn't believe it. And they said, "No, we don't want the treatment." Bang, in came social services. Baby taken away. Subsequently proved the hospital diagnosis was wrong, and the parents were right. Never had the baby back. And the mother has subsequently had two further babies, and they are taken away as well. On the last occasion, social services went into the delivery room to tell the mother, having, she'd just given birth, that that baby was also going to be taken away. And one of the two social workers that went into the delivery room had shingles. Because they're Christians, they're all in the notes intimations that they're mentally ill. If you're a Christian, you've got to be mentally ill. This is a fantastic lady. I speak to her a lot. A ten-year-old son taken. If I had more time, I could show you more. Within a few weeks of disappearing into a care home, he's thin, weak, and he's so frightened, he's wetting himself. But she said, "The scary thing is, Brian, they're hunting me for my three-year-old." Hunting. And this is the word that the parents use. And what fascinated me is people who gave me information different parts of the country. It was a template operating. They'd never colluded or talked to each other, but their stories as to how the social services took their children tied in. This is a French lady, married originally to an Englishman living in this country. She discovers that her two girls are being abused. She goes to social services and the police for help. The case is twisted a hundred and eighty degrees because this is the technique. And eventually, it destroys her health. So they've now got her pinned as a sort of psychiatric case. Tough lady, Corinne. She fought and fought. And eventually, much to her amazement, was awarded custody of the girls and permission to go to France. She took them to France. And within a few months, the father had fought through the French courts, and they re-awarded him custody, even though he was the man abusing the children. I've got some photographs which I'd love to show you, but I don't think you want to see them. Collusion between judges, England, France. Collusion between French social services and English social services. Interesting. And this is a little girl. This is thirty years ago, but this case is very, very important. Her name's Helena Bai. And basically, she had an adverse reaction to a... I can't remember the name of the procedure, but you put a dye, basically, in to see what's going on. And she had a reaction to that. And then the hospital in Bridge End made a diagnosis that really she had epilepsy. And they put her on epilim. And they put her on a dose that made that girl ill, terribly ill. Sick, unwell, in pain, headaches. And when the parents said, "We knew something was wrong", and they tried to get her off that medication, they were told, "If you try and get her off the medication, we will take your daughter from you." So in the end, they made a decision, and they went with the hospital treatment. And eventually, the girl died under quite horrible circumstances. The hospital lied over the time at which the girl died. They didn't tell the parents for some time. And the reason they did that is because whilst they were delaying telling the parents the girl was actually dead and preventing them from seeing her, they were stripping body parts out of her. All provable. And they still haven't got her back. They've got bits of her back, but they haven't got all of her back. This is not an isolated case, but I haven't got time to tell you more. How can this happen in this country? Well, it happens because Jack Straw and others have created a secret court system where you cannot get justice. These are key things to do with... These are key things to do with tributes of people involved in child snatching. They're very cold. People within the social services or the police or the judiciary, they lack emotion, very, very cold, yeah? They lie, they forceify documents, they bully, they intimidate, they threaten, they spread false rumours to help get the children away, they turn children against the parents. I just told you the one, "Mummy doesn't love you because mummy's just had another baby, so she obviously doesn't like you." These people are somehow being taught how to use psychological bullying. And in some cases, the mothers have told us, and they usually say, "I'm not sure I should tell you this because you'll think I'm a bit loopy, but it was scary when they came because they were like little robots."
He wants to stay here. You can't be taking him.
The social worker with us that's, uh...
Yeah.
That way as well.
No, you can't be taking him, Mr Pip. Do you want to speak about this yourself?
Yeah, I'm not going anywhere.
Unfortunately, we've got legal power to take you away tonight, that's what we're doing. Uh, whether it's by force or not, I'm afraid.
I'm staying here.
It is unfortunately.
Yeah, there was a problem, we did talk on the phone earlier.
Is it yours, Spock, sir?
Yes, and I was totally unaware of what had happened.
Right.
So I wasn't aware that any kind of order had been made when we talked. But the court today was persuaded really that it had to be...
Well, Pip's saying to me that he's staying here and he doesn't want to go anywhere. So the thing is, he's staying here and he's saying he's staying here and that's why he's staying here.
The problem that we've got, I suppose, is that the judge or the court, no, hang on, it's important that you get to know this really is the problem, is that, you know, the court today, the decision was made for whatever reason, I don't know the reasons, but nonetheless, the court has made the decision that Pip has to be removed from here and going to foster care. Now, that doesn't mean you can't make representation, now I advise you will yet, to get a solicitor.
He's not going.
Right. We've got the court, you can try to have a look at yourself.
Yeah.
Which clearly states that we've got legal power to take him. So Pip, you shouldn't get your shoes on and whatnot, I'm afraid you're going to have to come with us. If you refuse to, then we can take you by force. It is, I'm afraid.
I haven't.
If we have to carry you out, we'll do it, Pip. No, we want to hear, it's not a nice thing.
Not happening.
But it's going to happen tonight. Could you stop filming us, please?
No.
Could you stop filming us?
It's my house, I'm in my own house, if I want to film in my house.
I don't like being filmed, so...
I don't mind, yeah, I don't like my son being kidnapped from my own house.
He's not being kidnapped, we've got a legal court over there.
You've got no right to take my son.
We have every right, I'm afraid, sir.
No, you haven't.
We have. It's been granted by a district judge that we've got every right to take a child from here.
They haven't, Pip.
Right. So if we're going to get your shoes on, Pip, it's up to you how we play this.
I am not going.
We either go out civilly or we carry you out.
I'm not going.
I don't want to have to put handcuffs on you, unfortunately, but if that's what we have to do, that's what we will do.
Pardon, you're saying you're going to put handcuffs on my son when he's committed? No one has committed any crime, it's your all in the wrong.
Right. If anybody obstructs, obstructs to do that, then they will be committing...
What did you just say?
Anybody obstructs us to take the child, then they will be committing a crime themselves.
I think you should keep your hands off my son, Mr Guard, and I think you should keep your... Well, you're not, you're not taking him anywhere because you've got no right to take him.
We are.
No.
So Pip, can you get your shoes on, mate?
I am not going.
I'm afraid you are.
I am not.
You'll be going anywhere.
Not yet.
Have a quick reading, it'll set out the realities of it.
Using reasonable force, if necessary, any person, child away is not supposed to disclose that information. Yeah, you know, like I phoned up, I phoned you and told you that he's here and that he's not going because he's staying with me.
Right.
And like, no, you're not taking my, you're not taking my son into foster care at Christmas. It's Christmas in four days.
It's not my decision. It's not my decision, I'm purely a messenger to carry out what a court has to do.
He's not going, yeah, he's staying with me and he's said he's staying with me all along, he's been saying it for three months and you've told a pack of lies in court, your social services have told a pack of lies, I've been posting it on YouTube for the last three months. Here, I'll show you.
Well, no, the fact remains, Mr Trow, that the judge heard your argument.
Yes.
And heard social services' argument and then they heard from its own solicitor in Guardian and that the decision has been made.
Whoa.
Now, that doesn't stop you from...
We're totally in opposition to the decision, we don't agree with it and you're not taking my son off me at Christmas.
It's more than the time, I'm afraid that's what's going to happen.
No, it's not.
It is.
It's not because he's not going, we're not snatching my son for no reason, there's no one done anything wrong.
Right.
There's no one done anything wrong in this house, there's no one breaking any laws in this house and the only people who are...
If you're obstructing us, you are breaking the law.
What do you call obstruction? I'm, I'm telling you to keep...
By telling us that we're not taking him, when we clearly are going to...
How, how do you feel about this?
It's not your decision.
It should be.
Well, it's not, I'm afraid. Well, whether it should or it shouldn't, I can't comment on that, but I'm afraid it's not your decision. The court's, the court's granted the order and we have to carry out that order. We cannot leave here tonight without you, under any circumstances.
We're not, are we?
Well, that's the top and bottom of it, we're not leaving here tonight under any circumstances unless you come in, Pip.
There's a problem, man. Given that we want to, we want to try to do this without, we want to try and...
They would be definitely if you watched that.
Back from that, whereas we were being content of that. So unfortunately, it, it does have to happen, but the important thing is, is that you still have the court with a solicitor.
You took all my rights, you took, the first thing you did was save my better internal responsibility.
Mr Trow, you could have had a solicitor for this.
Uh, I tried to get solicitor and it turned out the solicitor, he turned off and Amanda had contacted him weeks previous, I can't do it because of the conflict.
But of course, of course, Pip did have a solicitor.
Um, the one that refused to come here, the one that hasn't even been seen in the house, the one that said that he's in danger and he don't like it here and I'm a danger, he's not lying.
Can you understand the predicament?
No, I can understand it, you told a load of lies in court and here, look, I can say, look, there's a playlist here, you know, when you get home, you can, you can find this and it's called To Social Services.
We're not interested in it at the moment, we've come here to carry out...
Well, we're telling you, right?
An order and that's what's going to happen.
There we go, look, I'll, yeah, I'll say, "Social Services can't help what you've done to me and anything."
Right.
It's what social services have done to me and anything.
Right, well, that's something that needs to be taken up at a later date because I am powerless at the moment.
Sure.
To do anything else but take Pip tonight.
Yeah, you're not taking...
I am taking Pip.
You're not taking my son?
I am taking Pip.
What's your name?
It's Steve.
Steve what?
Richardson.
Steve Richardson?
Yeah.
What's your number?
Eight seven oh nine. It'll be all on the log, there's a log printed out, you'll be able to access it by phone in the O eight four five six oh six oh six oh six number and get any detail with any officer that's attended the evening. But the top and bottom of it is, we are going to have to leave with Pip tonight.
No.
I'm afraid we are.
No.
So if you want to get your shoes on, this is the last chance, so if you want to get your shoes on, otherwise we're going to have to take you by force, Pip. It's your call, mate. It's your call. You don't want that, mate. No, you're not, I'm afraid we are, I'm afraid we are, we are. You're stuck, you'll be, you'll be all alone, you're stuck. Right, well, can you do that, mate?
No, go away.
Pip!
No, go away.
Pip, we're doing...
Hey, you're not allowed to do this.
Pip, Pip, get off me, go.
Oh my God, get off my stuff. Get off my stuff. Don't come near me, no. Get off me, go. Get off my stuff. Fuck you, look at that. No, get off, get off me. Get off me. Get off me.
Now, I will tell you what this is, it's the result of programming. These people are being given neurolinguistics which are changing their values and the Nazis did this. Never contact social services. You couldn't get a better statement than that. Yep? Don't sign anything, don't give your children up even if it's supposed to be temporary. Refuse to be assessed by psychiatrists, why? Because they lie about you. And don't let them access to your medical records and don't write any letters. So everything he is saying is stay away from these people, they're dangerous, but aren't social services supposed to be the people who look after our children? This lady worked for the European Union in Romania, she discovered what we were told about the children was not entirely true. We were given a picture of disaster where many of the orphanages were trying to help the children with limited means. What she discovered though was consultancies and charities were helping traffic Romanian children. She discovered on some of the orphanages, there was a bolt-on pharmaceutical laboratory where they were testing the children and including in some cases, wiring up the children with electrodes when they were introduced to prospective parents. She's exposed it, she lost her job in the EU, she receives death threats, she is now tracking the paedophile networks at the highest levels of the European Union and that includes Britain. If you go to the Communist Manifesto, look at what it says in number two. Abolish the family. The Frankfurt School psychiatrists actually studied the destruction of society by moral family and spiritual breakdown. Nice people, when the war came, they moved abroad, America, Britain, all over the place. But that is their mentality, vicious. Here's the Communist International, it's going to produce a regional union, it's going to level the economies, that's what's happening to us now, we're being suppressed and the regions are going to form a new world order. I haven't made that up, that is straight out of their communist, communist programme for nineteen twenty-eight. People train in this stuff for warfare, this was Stalin's advisor, talking about psychopolitics, causing chaos, distrust, economic depression. This is the cover of the original Nazi document talking about the formation of a European Union. Just remember the Bilderbergers that I've talked about. If you read that document, it says a lot of things, including single transport system, you've heard it, this is the blueprint for the EU. This is one of our own army psychiatrists and the document is nineteen forty and in it, he's talking about how psychiatrists will penetrate society to re-engineer us into thinking and acting the right way and he says, "We've made a useful attack." This man intimately linked with the Tavistock Institute, which is itself linked with the formation of the NHS, there's a dirty little trail here, and he was eventually involved with the World Mental Health Federation. By mental health, they mean you're healthy when you're in the new society. This is a document talking about a plan to destroy Western society, it came from a Soviet dissident and surprise, surprise, it says they're going to destroy families. It's happening, you're watching it. If you think I'm joking or I'm Walter Mitty, everything I've said is provable, you can research it yourself. But I tell you, if we could get over the gagging orders, I could present you with this high of information showing that courts are lying in order to help take children away.
John Heving. Thank you, Speaker, I am a further house to my declaration of interest as chairing the Justice for Families campaign. I remain concerned about cases in all the secret courts in the UK. The more secret the court, the more the system acts against the rule of law. Narrow freedoms of speech that are at least as important as broad access to publicity. Reporting wrongdoing to regulators and asking for advice are important narrow freedoms. Without academic scrutiny, nonsense can be spouted and experts can lie for money with impunity. Care proceedings are an area of difficulty. I remain of the view that around a thousand children a year wrongly forcibly adopted in the UK. Gradually, I'm getting more government support in this area, sadly still not the UK government. Last week, I spoke at the Polish Embassy at a conference about care proceedings. Concerns have now been raised also by Nigeria, the Czech Republic, Bulgaria, Latvia, Zimbabwe, Sri Lanka, Spain and Turkey. For the avoidance of doubt, my main, my concern is that a material proportion of care proceedings go way beyond being plainly wrong and hit the threshold of totally nuts. I must stress however that I see the appointment of Sir James Mumbi to be President of the Family Division as a positive step. I also weigh in on judgments such as two twenty thirteen EWHC five two one fan of Mostyn Jay. When the member for Cacardian Caradenbyth apologised to the children who were forcibly sent to the Commonwealth, I asked what compense he had that such an apology would not be issued in the future for what we are doing today. His response was to ask me to send details of individual cases. I have of course sent many individual cases to UK government ministers, the standard response is, "It's nothing to do with us, Gov." The fact is, according to our constitution, the UK government has to publicly accept judicial decisions, although in practice, they often criticise them, but not in the family division. More recently, Australia has apologised for forced adoption. The question was put by Florence Bologna to Professor Eileen Munro as to whether in the future, we may see an apology in the UK. Her response was, "I would not be surprised if a future generation looks back and thinks how horrific the quality of our work was and the damage that we did to families." What we have developed, and this is mainly through a mathematical error in the use of the number of children in care for the denominator of the adoption target, is a care system that's obsessed with adoption. It is so obsessed with adoption that it does things that objectively have to be seen to be irrational. I won't go into the details of Angela Wildman's case because I've referred to it before and I haven't got time. I was pleased to hear that the arrest warrant was removed from Susan McCabe, the daughter of councillor Janet Mockridge, who has been living in France with her two children for over five years. The attempts to remove her son for adoption in England whilst leaving her daughter gave a message of a system more concerned about winning than about the best interests of the child. Another case recently was one where I read a note about the effect of the proposal on a child that should be adopted out of her family. The report said, "Since being told about the adoption, A's mood has changed, she is clearly concerned and upset by this move, which is perhaps to be expected. However, she has nightmares most nights and is not getting adequate sleep. Two weekends ago, she vomited five times in one night." This case is not unique. There are even international cases where the system has taken children from people visiting the UK and refused to give them back even though the system clearly does not have jurisdiction. This is damaging to the children, I am prevented from this, by the subdutesty rule, from giving more information here. The international cases are particularly interesting as you have the assessments in England to compare against assessments from professionals in other countries. Professionals in other countries wonder why such strange things are done, things that cause serious psychological damage to children in the UK. Working with Slovak politicians, I've managed to establish an inquiry by the Human Rights Commissioner in the Council of Europe. However, it remains that it is a problem which is basically arises in secret courts is constitutionally difficult to fix because it needs scrutiny to fix it. There is an additional challenge that the people who are affected who are UK citizens are generally poorer people and less articulate. Hence, although stories about people who are foreign citizens maltraced in the UK get substantial coverage in the foreign media, there are only a few journalists such as Sue Reid, Christopher Booker and Ted Geary who are willing to report on these cases. Denise Robertson, this morning's agony aunt's speech at the Justice for Families Conference in Birmingham last December really should be broadcast on TV to explain the truth. What we actually have is a failure of democracy in the same way as the cover-up over Hillsborough and the failures at Meads Staffordshire Hospital. We have a system that's going wrong in a large number of cases and maltreating families. In maltreating families, it is maltreating the children and the adults. It is really well known that this is going on, however, the government deny it. The inquiries that occur in Parliament do not look at the individual cases. Without looking at the individual cases, you cannot see the things that are going wrong. Inquiries such as the Family Justice Review are dominated by people who run the system and hence are unlikely to recognise the failures of the system. I did put forward proposals in my private Members' Bill, but it was squeezed out by the government and who still haven't explained in detail why. I have had a conversation with the Children's Minister, but I have no hope from that. Now, I have very little time left and there's a lot more speech I'd like to give, there's a lot more needs to be said, but I'll end with Happy Easter.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, this is, this is another of our meetings about handling family court and public court proceedings of Mackenzie Friends, volunteers for Justice for Families. So it'd probably be best if we, we just kick off. The difficulty for those people who are not experienced in this area is, as I was told by a social worker interestedly from the West Midlands, that at times, the social workers conspire with the parent solicitors to undermine the parent's cases. It therefore is well advised for people to be very, very careful about any lawyers that they get involved in because you could find, as we did today, they act to undermine your case, because we had one of those happen today. And it can cause all sorts of problems and I've had social workers come to me as whistleblowers explaining how they have conspired previously with parent solicitors to undermine the parent's case. And when you have that going on, the only safe way is to do it yourself. The nature of secrecy in the family courts is that... The nature of secrecy in the family courts is that it's difficult to get into the court unless you have a good reason. And there's an important European case, which is actually oddly enough, 38,000, which is a case relating to Dr David Sawall. Now, that case looked at Article Three compliance in child protection proceedings. And Article Three is about inhuman treatment. And there is a very substantial argument that removing a newborn baby from a mother is inhuman treatment. And the evidence from that is the number of suicides that happen as a result of care proceedings. And we're doing some research on that relatively recently because there were a couple of suicides in the last two weeks. The Association for the Improvement in Maternity Services have a lot of documentation on that. We're trying to put all of that together. The argument in the European Court was that it is acceptable to treat people in a manner which would be otherwise seen as an inhuman manner, as long as it is inevitable. However, most of the proceedings involving newborn babies being removed are in fact not inevitable because the mother could have been placed in a mother and baby unit. We hope to challenge this process on a number of bases. We've got an interesting case in Nottingham where we initiate proceedings in the lower courts, appeal them to the Court of Appeal, who as usual, they go away because they tend to do that. We then take it to the European Court. One of them is RP versus the United Kingdom, which was RP versus NCC. That's a very interesting case because it involves the use of mental capacity legislation whereby a psychologist says somebody hasn't got capacity to instruct a solicitor. And that case then goes off to, you know, the official solicitor, who then comes in and concedes the case against the parent, which is what happened in this case. We issued proceedings, that got permission in the Court of Appeal oddly enough. Went to the House of Lords who said, go away. But we've got it into the European Court. And the interesting thing, you see, one thing we're strategically trying to do is get as many cases into the European Court as possible because the European Court has a facility under Article 39 to initiate interim proceedings. In other words, to stop an adoption. But at the moment, they don't do that. And we'll only be able to get the European Court to stop adoptions going ahead and stop the juggernaut in its tracks if we can get enough cases going through to the European Court. But the challenge is actually to kick things off right at the start. So in other words, when the initial proceedings go through, be it an emergency protection order or an interim care order, that needs to be appealed either to the county court first and then subsequently to the Court of Appeal, which will turn it down. Let's not beat around the bush. But then it needs to be taken to the European Court. And that has to be the key strategy because we need to get a widespread recognition that in fact, what we're doing is going around recycling babies. We're not actually producing care proceedings. The statistics for that are quite interesting. There's a report that's produced every year based on information known as SSDA 903, which looks at all the transacts, all the things that go on with children. And you can look at what happened in 1995 to those children taking in care then by the age of the child taken into care and what happened in 2004, 2005 and 2006. I have those figures. And it's quite easy to demonstrate from that that what's happened as a result of the adoption targets, which themselves were scrapped, was that we've increased the number of newborn babies taken into care and got them adopted. And an interesting statistical comparison is in England, round about two-thirds of the babies taken into care get adopted. In Scotland, around about two-thirds of the babies taken into care go around to their parents. And I asked Gordon Brown about why this was when we're supposed to treat the birth family with some importance. And he said, because it's different in Scotland. Which was a very funny answer. Well, I know, but the Scottish system is different in part because there's the children's panel, which makes a big difference. However, so what we're trying to do is get these cases at an early stage and then take them through the courts, which all takes a certain amount of time. So we get them into the European Court. Because what we've managed to achieve, we've achieved two things in fact on the RP case. One is to get urgent proceedings in the European Court where they're moving very, very quickly and those people who are used to the European Court haven't seen things move this quickly. And secondly, the Equalities and Human Rights Commission, which is a body that was created relatively recently, has for the first time ever intervened in a case. And they've intervened in this case. Their arguments are in essence in support of our arguments, that people's rights are being wrongly removed from them in the courts. So that's an important part of the process. What we have is a situation where there's good practice and bad practice. Most importantly, there's bullying management. And there's bullying management because the system is driven by numbers. That's the real people at fault here. Much that, I've got lots of criticisms of the lawyers. The lawyers really have a lot to answer for. It's the government for changing what should be a system driven by human values into one driven by numbers. And all the targeting system, the performance indicators, and Ofsted, I picked it up recently. Ofsted said Birmingham was inadequate because we had too many children in care and too few adoptions from care. Now, I thought we got rid of the adoption targets. And it turns out, we've got rid of the adoption target BV163, but not the adoption target PAFC 23. And Ofsted are going around saying to people, you've got to have more adoptions from care. Now they get the figures wrong because they ignore all the Section 20 kids that are there. And so, because you'll never get the Section 20 kids adopted because very often, it's parents can't cope with them. You put them in care on accommodation orders. And so, in theory, they're trying to get these kids adopted, which you can never do. So they drive for the younger children because they tend to be more readily adopted. And you can see it in all the statistics. And anyone who wants a copy, a lot of them are on the website. And I can put more of the copies of the statistics out. It is important that people recognize that there is good practice and bad practice in this area. There are good lawyers and bad lawyers, although I only know a few lawyers I would trust. I would trust more social workers as a proportion of the whole than I would trust lawyers. There are good social workers and bad social workers. And it is wrong to demonize all the social workers, as some have been doing recently. Because there is good practice and bad practice, but the system encourages bad practice. It creates an environment where the managers who deliver the numbers do so by bullying people and forcing people to do things that are wrong and that they know are wrong, which is why people leave the job. Because they hate doing it. And so why you can't get a lot of English social workers is the people forced to remove children that they don't want to remove walk. All right? And that's the be all and end all of it. But the difficulty of fighting it is getting the recognition that it's broken in the first instance. The problem is that there's this conflict created between two sets of parents. And in fact, if you look at the Webster case, there are now four people, two sets of parents, who know that the children they have, they shouldn't have. Right? And what's that for them? That's not good for them. They are victims of the system just as much as the Webster parents and the five children that they will be suing. The odd thing which was new to me in the Webster judgment in fact, was that there have been adoptions that have been reversed. In England, and I thought there was one that came close in Scotland, but what didn't actually happen. But in England, there have been at least one adoption that was reversed. And I thought there never had been any. So they can't actually say they never do. But I think one of the difficulties you face is you face a situation where large numbers of children have been wrongfully adopted. But they are now with adopted parents, although some of the adoptions have been disrupted or have failed and the children have gone back into care. At some stage, the sort of inertia of the judicial establishment here in believing that having only one legal opinion is enough will come up against the European Court saying it's not enough. There's an interesting thing, unicef to studies comparing the successes or failures of different countries in terms of preventing deaths from child abuse and neglect. And those countries that do worse are those countries which have forced adoption. I would argue that comes from the fact that practitioners are set against the parents at an early stage because the parents have that fear that they will lose their children forever, which creates that tension where people should be working together. They have a conflict. And we have this particular problem with special case reviews in this country, which is that there's great difficulty auditing the number of special case reviews. Ofsted believe it's now running at between 150 to 200 a year special case reviews following the death of a child, when the figures quoted to the World Health Organisation by the UK are 11. There was a good report done by David Rose, actually Annabelle did a lot of work for that report in The Mail on Sunday, which looked at the question of how well does the system work? And the answer is very badly. Yeah, Birmingham was 15 when, you know, it's, it's... There are good reasons why this happens and partly it comes from the way the government manages it, the bullying style of management. Well, getting independent research is absolutely critical. I spoke to Herbert Laming or Laming, who produced the report to the death of Victoria Climbier. I think the government have a big problem inasmuch as they're only looking at whether or not the Laming reforms actually were implemented, many weren't proposed by him. The problem is that reorganizing social services wasn't the solution to the problem. And it wouldn't be the solution to the problem again. And the problem is in the main rules by the way in which the system is performance managed and things like the Integrated Children's System and things like that. The Integrated Children's System, I'm sorry about this, we're just getting into another area, is the system which is used, it's a rule in terms of documents, that's used for decision-making and record holding by local authorities' children's services. And it's driven by performance management. You've got to make this decision within that time. Not the right decision, but the rapid decision. So the first assessment in seven days, core assessment in 35 days. But what if it's the wrong decision? Yeah, I know, exactly. And you can't blame the practitioners who are bullied into doing this. Yeah, and they get bullied into doing this. And they're bullied into doing this actually by the government. Not because the managers want to get their stars, because everybody wants to get stars. It's like little kids who like to get stars at school. Senior directors of children's services also want to get their stars and be assessed as not being inadequate or inadequate, satisfactory or excellent.
Unfortunately, we live in a bonus-driven country.
Well, it's a bonus-driven country. And although we've stopped them giving out money for adoptions, we haven't stopped them putting pressure on local authorities to increase the adoption. I actually emailed the head of children's services at Ofsted today to ask him what the current performance indicators are and what Ofsted is saying about them for each of the 157 children's services authorities in England. We'll see what happens there. They're okay. They are doing what they're told. They are told to do this in this way. And you can see all the documents and they all specify everything in great detail, including PAFC 23, which is the problem we face at the moment. Sorry about that. It's slightly off the issue of court. But it explains why the decision was going wrong to start out.
That's the same thing with the expert witnesses. They expect a miracle in a half an hour interview. You can, for example, diagnose a personality disorder, unless you interview the relatives or the people who work with them. But these experts get a huge fee for a half an hour of rubbish. And that is a damning effect on the experience.
And it messes the whole thing up because what the experts are paid by their conclusions and the conclusion they're paid to come out is the parent's guilty. So they produce a report saying the parent's guilty, but the analysis isn't there for it.
How can that be?
Well, it's the nature of the system. That's why the system needs to be changed. And the fact that you only have one expert means when somebody comes up and says, parent's guilty, that's it. Done and dusted. And the Court of Appeal says that's correct. And the House of Lords says that's correct. And the European Court says, where's the second opinion? Generally, we find a different situation where we're fighting the state where the state has all the money on one side. And basically, one of the things that happens is people often have, lose their jobs as a result of care proceedings and therefore end up in a tighter situation. So it's absolutely dreadful, maltreatment of families, likewise the judicial process. No, I've had social workers come to me whistleblowing about what's going wrong. But obviously, I have to protect their identities. The police might come and arrest me, I went to Damien Green's, try and find out who they are. They won't get there. But no, the system's broken and it's broken on a managerial level, which is why it creates all the bad patterns of activity and it just destroys children's lives. One of the reasons I'm not so popular with the law justices at the moment, because I've actually just reported to the Office of Judicial Complaints, which probably stirred up this morning a little bit further for what they said in the judgment. When you have so much bad practice and it's just so accepted and it's covered up by the judiciary, then it's much harder to get something to happen. The fact that we have to go to the European Court to get justice is wrong. We should be able to get justice in England, but we can't. We've taken some time to work out all the processes for this. The lawyers are under pressure not to appeal things. Partly, they won't get funding from legal aid. One of the problems is legal aid doesn't fund child care in the system. Partly, they get really frowned on. Then they jump on the board and undermine the case as well. No, well, you see, the point is this, is that we can chase it up all the way. And they cannot, they have no excuse. We have this case, two cases in Liverpool where it took me over a year to get the judgment. But once we keep that off, the embarrassment it caused the judicial process, because it is embarrassing because they've got to give their reasons. Well, we are doing research on issues, but the challenge is that we have to get better at getting the key information together. Orders, judgments, that sort of thing. Because you can have boxes and boxes of paperwork, but it's actually only really judgments and the orders that you need to understand the case. So, you know, we've got people in Ireland and people in Sweden. Ireland's the biggest group. Denmark, I am not Denmark. I need to know who's in Denmark. Denmark are very good on their child protection services. Yeah, no, it's so, when you deal with the practitioners in Ireland and in Sweden, because I deal with them directly, and they are so much better. Sorry about this, but you know, the bad practice here, there's too much of it. And in Ireland, generally, it's good practice. There are a lot of bad practices in Ireland as well, but they are so much better. And Sweden is so much better. But it's a different culture, you see, than Denmark. The Children's, the DCSF Select Committee went recently to look at Denmark and the system they use in Denmark. Much, much better. Yeah, it's out of step because it's the judicial process. It's where, because it's all monitored by the Court of Wales in the Wales. In Scotland, they have a unified bench. So in other words, you don't have family judges, you have judges. So they don't develop the bad habits the judges have here. And also, although there are some problems, also Scotland has the children's panel, a sort of jury system. It's interesting, in Japan, they recently brought in a jury system for criminal offences because they found that everyone was guilty all the time. And it's the same in the family courts, which is dreadful. The law is gradually getting changed, but part of it is getting recognition that the system's broken. Because if the government think it's all working well, they're not going to change things. It's just not good for the kids.
Now they're investigating courtroom custody, Britain's secret shame. Angry fathers are waging a campaign of civil disturbance. They've even lobbed purple powder at the Prime Minister. So what has got them so irate? The failings of the family courts, which they say are preventing them seeing their children. When parents split up, it may be the family courts who decide who gets the children. But these courts operate in secrecy, so can we trust them to treat parents fairly and put our children first? Britain's secret shame is that thousands of our youngsters are being deprived of their fathers because the courts are failing. These people claim this is the only way they can get their voices heard on what they say is one of the greatest social injustices in Britain today. A Clifton Suspension Bridge in Bristol has been closed to traffic because of a protest by the campaign group Fathers for Justice. Four fathers frustrated with the family courts sit out their protest for two days and a night.
Also, if the police come trying, come up here to try and get us down there, we're just come up here. It's a simple as that. We are desperate fathers.
This Spider-Man has agreed to tell us his story.
When I decided to scale the bridge, I was feeling really frustrated and down. I was being denied access to my son. There are thousands of people in the same boat as me, but nothing's being done about it, it's being ignored.
Fathers for Justice claim they have 10,000 members in the UK, all unhappy with the legal system. The family courts in England and Wales make 61,000 contact orders each year, but at least 20% of these are broken, usually by mothers. Campaigners claim there are over 10,000 fathers unable to see their children, even though the courts say they should.
At the moment, if a contact order is broken, the judge can really only do a very, very narrow number of things. He could send someone to prison. He could fine the person concerned. But he can't, for example, make a community service order. He can't make a probation order. He can't direct that the parents go to see a psychiatrist to help them through the problems and explain how important the contact is.
What the fathers want is for the order to be obeyed. What the children need is for the order to be obeyed. The children do not need one of their parents to go to prison.
Steve is helpless. Despite having ruled that he should have contact with his son, the courts won't ensure that he does. He doesn't even know where his own child lives.
Any court that won't enforce his court orders is basically a sham. There's no point in going to court because you know you get a contact order, it gets broken, you have to wait another two months to go back to court. So the legal system at the moment for fathers is just a waste of space. So the legal system at the moment for fathers is just a waste of space.
This year, Fathers for Justice took their protest direct to the family court in London. They claim this was the only way of complaining against a court that bans people from speaking out.
Anybody that's been to family law court is not allowed in public to talk about their own individual case. I'm not allowed to give you details of my case. In other words, it's a gagging order.
Solicitor and Deputy Judge Christopher Butler decides cases in the family courts. He defends the rules of confidentiality.
I can think of no reason why matters relating to the internal machinations and operations of a family should be publicised, because that would be deeply damaging to the children and could have a very, very lasting effect on them and their parents.
But these protesters claim that courts which operate behind closed doors are not getting the public scrutiny they need.
I can understand from the child's point of view, not naming the children, but after that, I think it gets to the stage where it's in the public interest. If people knew some of the cases that you and I know, I don't think that, you know, there would be the problem that exists today. And part of the reason that problem exists is because of the secrecy of family law.
My name is Philip Thompson, I live in Erdington, Birmingham. I just want to tell you people, if you would care to listen, please, that I have a distinct and utter case to make against Walsall Social Services, and here they are. I want these people to be brought to book. They should be taken to court and sentenced for the crime that they have committed against myself. I'm the head of my family, our entire family are law-abiding people who have never done anything against the state, and we were most clearly treated by these people. No justice whatsoever. CAFGAS and Walsall Social Services combined with the solicitors to bring this action. And there was corruption all around, because this could never have happened if it was handled decently and properly by the judiciary. Well, what happened, my great-grandchildren have been forcibly adopted by these people without all the legal, uh, legal, uh, taken into collegial actions, which they should have done. They'd all been ignored. The courts have not listened to us. Whatever social services said was the truth, nothing we said was ever believed or given record of. All these things should be taken forward by the government now. I know that they're having a review of the social services, but people like me should be brought forward to give testimony to this committee to tell them how we were misused by these people. Our family is a decent family, all of us from, I'm 75 years old. Our entire family are law-abiding citizens, we have no criminal offences. There's no alcoholism, no drunkenness, no drugs, no crimes, no insanity in our family, none of it. None of us were given the chance to have these children.
And yet they were forcibly adopted against your will.
Absolutely, with criminal intent. I have letters to show that they did not go through the proper procedures.
There are several cases out there where basically, once social services want your children, there's not much you can do about it, they're going to take them.
And they did it, and they did it, they're criminals, and I hope they're really brought to book.
It's possible to spot the problem individuals of the future while they're still in romper suits. No, these are not them. Their parents attend sessions to ensure the best possible upbringing for their kids. But the Prime Minister says if problem parents refuse such support, the state should step in.
If we're not prepared to predict and intervene far more early, then there are children that are going to grow up in families that we know perfectly well are completely dysfunctional, and the kids a few years down the line are going to be a menace to society and actually a threat to themselves.
I'm interested in how early, because a lot of the evidence suggests you need to be getting in there while the child is still in nappies, frankly.
Or pre-birth, even. We should be intervening far earlier, making it clear that in those circumstances, from a very early age, there's going to be support, but also some sense of discipline and framework put in place in order to make sure that that child gets a better start in life.
Government experts reckon that if you wait until adulthood, a dysfunctional person costs the taxpayer on average £25,000 a year. Even at nursery and primary school age, children can have developed profound behavioural problems that will blight their life chances. Hence, the focus on identifying and intervening as early as possible. The plan is for health visitors to flag up obvious problems, a computer system to identify babies growing up with multiple disadvantages, and once alarm bells ring, tailored support offered. But if the family refuses help, sanctions might include withdrawal of benefits, court orders, and ultimately, the children taken into care.
The reality is, if you want to get social services involved in that family, then basically, you've got to have a bruised baby on your hands. The threshold is that high, and we believe that, you know, we don't wait for that to happen. We pick up on the earth signs at a very early point, and we get in there.
And secondly, within what framework?
As Mr Blair comes towards the end of his premiership, he's anxious to leave his mark and prepared to take political risks. He knows that targeting babies and toddlers in his crusade against antisocial behaviour is bound to make headlines.
That group of families that are severely dysfunctional, that are multiple problems, there is no point in sort of pussyfooting around the issue.
That's scary for people, you know, this is Big Brother, this is, "that kid there is a problem of the future, we must go in".
Well, but you're going in to offer help and support, for example.
Maybe going in to say, "you're not going to accept our support, so we'll take your child away".
Well, you've got to look after the interests of the child.
But the idea that the state should intervene in how families bring up their children before problems occur is extremely contentious.
The government is trying to take over a parenting role. I mean, the idea of removing children, the proposal isn't completely clear, but the suggestion that children would be removed is not actually tackling the problem.
Ministers in your government, there's no new money for any of this. They are going to have to shift resources to put this plan into action. And they may already be looking and saying, "well, we know Tony's not going to be around perhaps in a year or two", and they're looking at the next guy, aren't they?
How do we reconcile liberty with security in this new world?
Let me say something to you, I don't want to live in a police state or a Big Brother society, or put any of our essential freedoms in jeopardy. But we can make choices in spending too. And instead of wasting hundreds of millions of pounds on compulsory identity cards as the Tory right demand, let that money provide thousands of extra police officers on the beat.
We will pursue identity cards because they're right. We think it is legitimate and right, in this day and age, to ask people to carry identity cards. It is the right thing to do.
Within a few years, you will be forced to carry an ID card, which will store a goldmine of private information, which will be uploaded to a database called the National Identity Register. Every time you interact with the state, it will form an audit trail, so the government will know your entire life's history. This will be linked to your medical records, your school records, and your DNA structure. Gordon Brown has already said that he will sell your information on to big businesses.
Your address, every time you move, you must tell the National Identity Register. If you fail your 11+, that'll be on the database. Buy a fishing licence. If you're a member of a trade unit. Go to the pharmacy to get drugs for your arthritis. If you've got HIV AIDS, that'll be on the database. Put your child in school. Then, when you apply for a job, their looker shop will shut, never, never consider you. And that is the police state.
Why should they have this information? Why should they know? What do they want with it? Why can't they just butt out of it?
The information held on you and your children will be used to stop crimes being committed even before they've taken place. But if you've got nothing to hide, you've got nothing to fear.
The danger that I fear in the great data collection, the database, is incompetence.
Computer says no. If the computer says no, in a society where virtually everything that you do relies on the computer saying yes, what is that? Is that a one-off event, or is that, from that point on, until you sort it out, you're a non-person?
They were unmarried and shunned by society, drugged, and forced to give up their babies. Five Tasmanian women have spoken out at a Senate hearing into forced adoption, hoping their grave breach of human rights will finally be acknowledged. One church organisation has apologised for the pain it caused.
They came seeking justice and an apology, but more importantly, to send a message to their children.
I want people to know that I loved my baby, that she was wanted, and that I am her mother.
Robin Cohen gave birth to a girl at the Royal Hobart Hospital in 1969. Eighteen and unmarried, she says she was drugged in the delivery room to stop lactation and forced to sign a consent form to give up her baby.
My baby was taken from me immediately at birth. My requests to see my baby were ignored. My requests to know the sex of my baby were ignored.
During labour, I was shouted at to stop making all that noise because you were disturbing the other ladies. I could not remember making a noise, I couldn't remember what had been going on. Therefore, I'm certain that I was drugged, which is a breach of my rights.
The women say they were isolated and made to feel guilty and ashamed.
The baby needs a family, how can you look after a baby? If you love the baby, you will adopt it.
We're not who we were painted to be, we're not Jezebels, we're not sluts, we're not whores, we're not bad girls.
Some of the women were sent to group homes to be hidden away until after giving birth. They said their babies went to infertile couples, and the records in many cases have been lost.
Money must have changed hands somewhere, I'm sure.
The Salvation Army ran a maternity home in West Hobart from 1923 to 1973. In that time, over 2,000 unmarried mothers gave birth, some as young as 13.
My guess is that there probably were things that happened that were inappropriate.
We would apologise for any pain that occurred at that time. But I also have the view that the social workers who were involved were working within the cultural context of that particular period of time.
The Senate Committee will decide early next year whether a Commonwealth apology is more appropriate. Anna Yard, ABC News.
Hi, yeah, my son and me had two days' contact a week. Now, the last contact we had, he was crying and shouting at me, saying, "mummy, just tell me the truth, don't lie to me, was it you and my sister that put me in care"? So I said, "no darling, okay, I'll tell you the truth, no, it was social services that put you in care". He was also trying to blame, thinking it was another social worker, who was a senior social worker assistant, because he'd heard me say in a review meeting that this other one that had just got a promotion after putting my son in care, that she'd said that in her eyes, he'd failed me, and in social services' eyes, he'd failed me. So I had to explain to my son that, no, this was actually a good guy. And he didn't realise that he was getting blamed for this, and his colleagues were backstabbing him. Now, because I've told my son the truth, as soon as I told him the truth, he was happy. He was really happy. He came out of contact, high-fived my partner, he was a happy boy, just because he needed to hear the truth, like all children do, right? And my only crime was telling the truth, and most of that truth was already told in the review meeting, okay? Right, now, I'm taking a big risk here. I'm going to the school, because I always give him a weekly Doctor Who magazine, because he loves Doctor Who magazine, he hasn't had it this week. So I'm going to go into the school to give him this Doctor Who magazine. I'm going to sneak in, and I'm just going to let him know how much I love him, and that this was social services again, and also to be strong, and that I'm fighting for him. Now, there's a good chance I could get arrested for this, and I know that, but my son's worth it. As long as I get him his Doctor Who magazine, and as long as I get to see him and tell him I love him, because they have stopped all contact, and they're saying that we have to go to court, like, next Friday. So that's like, that's three contacts missed, okay? And that's a lot for a little boy. And my son, he will be in absolute bits, okay? So they don't, they think that they know what children, what's best for children. They don't know what's best for children at all, right? All they do is destroy children's lives. They never thought for once that this was destroying my child's life. When all I've done is told the truth, right? They should have at least given me a warning first, or did that, right? But they've got it in for me, right? Because I've got my local MP involved and various other things as well, right? And they don't like it because we catch them out on things, right? But anyway, wish me luck, because that's what I'm going to do as a mother who loves her son. Right, just an update, because I've just let you know that I was going to the school to see, to give my son a Doctor Who magazine. All I wanted to do was give him his weekly Doctor Who magazine, tell him I love him, and tell him to be strong, okay? I managed to get to see him, and I gave him a cuddle, right? And like, my son, who's usually all over me, giving me cuddles, was like, "what are you doing here, mum, you're not allowed here"? And like, it was like he didn't even want to cuddle me. And like, he was surrounded by all these fucking, like, they might as well have been bodyguards, they were teachers, right? He was sat on his own with them. And then, like, I said, "I've just come to bring you Doctor Who magazine, to tell you I love you, and to tell you that I'm fighting for us to get our contact sessions", because all I did was tell the truth, right? Anyway, he said, and he said to me, "okay, mummy, you're not meant to be here, you'd better go now", right? And it really, really hurt, because that is not like my son. It's like they're poisoning his mind, I don't know what they've said to him since that meeting that I told the truth. Then, the school head mistress, right, that I used to think was okay, she said, "right, she said, 'I'm asking you to leave now'", and she said, and because of this, she said, "your son's probably going to have to change schools now". So that's going to mean that I'm actually like, I'm not going to know where my son is. I've been told by my solicitor that I'll probably lose all contact, all because I told the truth.